Welcome to the Williamsburg City Council Work Session of November 10. Ms. McKay, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Williams, here. Ms. Ramsey, here. Mayor Ponds, here. Vice Mayor Dent, here. Ms. Kernscheer, here.
Okay, leads us into items for City Council Meeting of November 13. Mr. Trivitt, would you like to give us a preview, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing we have will be on the Clonan Williamsburg Arrival Plaza, and the second one will be to consider the utility improvement bonds. And then, under new business, we have consideration of the legislative agenda for the year, and acceptance for a state of good repair grant to do resurfacing of roads, the authorization to proceed with a bucket truck purchase for Public Works, the opportunity to enter into a VIPSa recycling contract with Republic Services, another grant, this time from VDEM, to do replacement of a generator at the Quarter Path Rec Center, and then finally, the extension of the city's moral obligation for the anticipated HTRFA line of credit.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, leads us now into public comments, and I do have a series of speakers cards, so I'll call some folks up, and if you'll just identify yourself as you come to the podium, and limit your comments to about five minutes. So first, I have Mr. Sam Sadler.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of council. Knowing me, as most of you do, I'm sure it's no surprise to any of you that I'm here today to not only confirm what I believe is the need for a new downtown library, but also to wholeheartedly endorse moving forward now on that project by accepting the bid you had before you. Council recognized the need for a new building and placed the project in its CIP over eight years ago. That's a long time to wait for a facility that we know is badly needed. One in particular that reflects, I think, the heart and the aspirations of our city the way our library does. And I won't bore you by reciting the studies, you've all read them, feedback that led councils before you to add the library to the city's CIP, nor will I reargue what the library means to the citizens of our regional library system. As fond as I am of its exterior, and I am generally fond of that, our current building was designed for another era. To those who argue that a new building is not needed, or that it could be renovated for less money, I really am convinced that the facts don't bear that out. And you and your predecessors on council haven't believed that either, or you wouldn't have moved the project forward as you have. Yes, James City County is building a new library. That facility is intended to complement the downtown library, not replace it. Even when both buildings are completed, if my numbers are correct, the regional library system will still not meet the state's square footage requirements or expectations for libraries. So this isn't an extravagant proposal. Further, being the fiscal conservatives that I know many of you to be, from a financial standpoint, it seems to me that this really is the time to move forward. I understand that the proposal you're exploring is one put forth by the low bidder. The cost, if I'm correct, for a new downtown library with expanded improved parking is already well below what James City County is paying for the facility they're adding, and that facility will be about half the size of this one. We've been offered a great deal, but the clock is ticking. And if we were to rebid at a later date, what hope would any of us have that the building cost will be lower then than the bid you have before you right now? Every day, we see the cost of everything going up, but building materials and labor costs are certainly rising. So in a very real sense, the bid you have before you is not likely to be one that will be offered again. Costs never seem to go down. And waiting means our staff and library users will be left without a facility the need for which has been well-known now for almost a decade. As a taxpayer, and as a longtime supporter of our great library, I urge you, when the time comes, for your vote, to vote in favor of accepting the bid you have. After all, as the saying goes, "A bird in the hand is worth two in the bush." We need that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker's card I have is Kelly Place.
Good afternoon, welcome. Good afternoon, how are y'all doing? My name is Kelly Place, I live on Waller Mill Road. I'm here to talk about the proposal for the solar panels abutting the Waller Mill reservoir. I live on Waller Mill Road. I'm a resident of York County, but I'm a consumer of the water. I'm not overly pleased that we pay Williamsburg 20% more for our water bill than any other Williamsburg water customer. That's a privilege reserved solely for residents of York County, like myself, that get Williamsburg water. And even though I'm one of the easiest and cheapest houses to deliver water to because the water treatment plant is on my road right down the street, that's one issue. But that's not, that's an issue for another time. The issues around this proposed solar panel development where they would clearcut, I think it's 162 or 262 acres, I only found out about this at 1:00 in the morning last night, I think is one of the most short-sighted things you could possibly do with regard to the health and the expense of the water customers of Williamsburg's Water Works. There are a lot of reasons people will be against this. I'm not here because I'm against the fragmentation of the forests to the wildlife and all the damage it does there, although I agree with the people that will be for this, against clearcutting forests adjacent to the reservoir. I'm not here because of the damage will be done to the entry corridors and the scenery in Williamsburg to the tourists coming in, although there'll be plenty of people that are here for that. I'm not necessarily here for the sedimentation that will go into the reservoir exacerbating the water treatment problems that we already have, though there'll be plenty of people here for that. There are a lot of issues that I agree with the people on that oppose this, but I'm not here for that. I'm here because I want to give you a source document called Protecting the Source. It's a joint scientific study done by the American Waterworks Association and the Trust for Public Land. It's only a 56-page document, easy to Google. I would suggest Googling Protecting the Source, and not only will you see the various costs and cost-benefit analyses of whether you should clearcut forests in the watershed of a reservoir, and it shows very clearly how much more it costs to treat the water for your customers, how much less healthy the water is, plus all the other issues we know that have to do with clearcutting large acres of forest, especially by a reservoir. It's pretty much the state-of-the-art on this issue of how to manage the watershed around a reservoir. The, I'm gonna draw back to a conversation I had on March 12 of 2009 with former Mayor Gene Ziedler and the city manager, Jack Tuttle. At that point, the King William Reservoir, which is a big water issue and the longest regulatory battle in Virginia's history, was just about to end. They didn't know that, but a lot of us did. But talking to Mayor Ziedler and Mr. Tuttle, I was complaining, or we were discussing the degradation of the watershed around the Waller Mill Reservoir and what the implications already were for the health of the water customers and the integrity of the water quality. And they were bummed. They were, first of all, I asked, "Are you ever gonna allow development on the I-64 side of Waller Mill Reservoir?" And they were like, "Oh, no." We made a terrible mistake, they said, when they allowed on Moretown Road for York County to put in the Home Depot, the Lowe's, the Walmart, and all the development that's gone on in Moretown Road. That's, they thought they didn't have to protect that. They didn't see it coming, they told me, in 2009, and they guaranteed that because so much of that land, right at the headwaters of the reservoir, Mayor Ziedler said, "We're now drinking the water off of Walmart's parking lot." And that's true. And talking privately with members of the Williamsburg Water Plant, which is just down the street from me, they told me that subsequent to all that development on Moretown Road and the drainage that goes in the reservoir, they told, because I was somewhat conversant with water issues, they told me that there were far more contaminants then. It was a lot more costly to treat the water. That causes not only health issues, but also much increased costs when you have to treat the water. That document I mentioned, Protecting the Source, outlines and quantifies the types of costs and harms. And when you Google that, Protecting the Source, you'll also see valuable in-depth information from the EPA, the American Waterworks Association, Nature Conservancy, a list of federal and regional organizations that have done deep research on this, so I encourage you all to look at that. I'm for solar farms, but not in the watershed of a reservoir that's crazy. It's the forested land buffers that you always see around reservoirs that protects the consumers, not only health-wise, but cost-wise.
Mr. Weeks, you wrapped up your time, if you could just wrap up.
Okay, yeah, sure. And so I urge you to do your research on that. And if you want to get solar farms, which I think are great, for God's sake, don't put them in the watershed of a drinking water reservoir. That's a mistake that's been made countless times across the country and across the world.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
And I encourage you to look at those mistakes that people have made and not repeat them. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next speaker's card I have is Natalie Miller-Moore. Welcome.
Hello. Although I was on the board of the Williamsburg Regional Library for more than nine years, and I am now the Executive Director for Williamsburg Downtown, an organization that is deeply interested in how a new downtown library would affect community vibrancy. I want to come to you with support for a new city library from a different angle. I hear a lot of conversations about what this might cost us, and I'm very fond of the saying, "Pay now, or pay later." I think we nearly always pay more later. One of the reasons I believe this is because I work in healthcare. And so I want to talk about investment in our health. The library is a public health site, is one of the most underutilized tools that we have, and I'm not even talking about distributing COVID tests or letting people do their telehealth appointments in our small conference rooms. I'm talking about how detrimental loneliness is to people's quality of life and ultimately, their longevity. I'm currently in a master's program and recently read a book about the loneliness epidemic written by our former Surgeon General. And he notes how humans are wired for connection, and loneliness is a sign, like hunger or thirst, that we need to do something about that. One of the most surprising statistics is that people with weak social relationships are 50% more likely to die prematurely. Since the pandemic, we've also seen huge rises in deaths of despair among middle-aged people from chronic stress, suicide, alcohol, and drug use. I know that you know that the city's two largest budget expenditures are public safety and education, and those expenses are likely to grow. And while the city is going to spend a lot of money on social services, mobile mental health crisis response, addiction services, and transporting people to the hospital, we could also be preventing some future costs by ensuring that people are connected to their community. We could avoid paying later with a lot less pain. I think that helping people find resources is a kind of risk reduction, and the public library is a great place to do that. It's also a place for lifelong learning. People can find the information that they need, and they can also find people to connect with. The library is one of the only places in the community where everyone feels welcome, is open from morning until evening and on the weekends, and our downtown location makes it easier, although imperfect, for many people to find their way here. In my time living in Williamsburg, I've seen older people who live by themselves delighted to come to the theater on Tuesday afternoons, people getting help filing their taxes, people stretching their budgets in the cookbook section, and new parents bringing their babies to play and meet other parents. I think that the library is an easy way to connect people, available to everyone without the cost per use, a monthly subscription, or a select membership, and the shared resources of our city maintain a low barrier for connection for everyone in the community. So because there is meant to be something for everyone, there should be room for everyone, and our staff should have the space that they need as well. I know that this is a well-considered project, and I think that the leadership of this community has already asked the hard questions. I think that a new library is the best solution for the costs of today, the community, and the future of the community. And, just to address this, no ebook collection will ever replace the library, which is an indispensable community information hub that can never be replaced precisely because human beings are wired for connection and we share information because it helps us not only survive, but thrive. I think that the library is a part of a healthy community, and a well-designed, well-built library with ample space will help us grow healthier together. What will saying no do for us, or what will delaying do? I think it will limit our vision, it will continue isolation, and delay what we already know we need. I want the longest, healthiest life for everyone in the community, and together, I think we can figure out the details of this. Paying more later seems foolish, so I believe we should choose a legacy worthy of a smart, kind, and connected community. Thank you.
Next card I have is Bruce Samuelson, and I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Bruce Sandcam, 710 Goodwin Street.
Thank you.
Williamsburg. A citizen of Williamsburg and a longtime and frequent user of our award-winning library. I fully support the plan to replace the existing library with a new library on the same location. This location is central for residents of Williamsburg, James City County, and Western York County. We often walk from our home to the library to take advantage of the wide variety of services, classes, presentations, resources, performances, and the books and digital media the library has to offer, or hosts in the library spaces. There can be little doubt that the existing library building has served the community well for over 50 years, but the library building has reached the end of its functional lifespan. Building a library to serve the community for the next 50 years is a daunting challenge. No one really knows what functions a public library will offer in five, 10, or 50 years. But our Williamsburg Regional Library staff has proven they can, will, and do adapt to changes that enhance the value of the library to the citizens of our city and counties. The value of the community, the value to the community of the library services and resources in their own way can be equal to the value of the community of the rescue, fire, and police services. As we have, as a community, provided the fire, rescue, and police departments with the environments they need to enhance their value to the community, it is time to provide the library with the environment they need to enhance their value to the community for the next 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker's card, and I have two of them, for Mr. Wilson. Would you like to come up? One on solar and one on library.
Actually, you should have three.
Well, I do.
I think this is...
I set the other one aside for the open forum as you've been...
Robert Wilson, 22, The Palisades. I'm speaking now in the public comment for items for the City Council Meeting November 13. I presume there'll be other chances to the library in the open forum?
Yep.
You know, it's ironic that in the same week that the city manager, sitting member of the Williamsburg Regional Library that you appointed is presenting to you the Williamsburg Regional Library Recommendation of 50,000-foot Facility, he is also presenting to you a proposal to issue an additional $15 million in the regional sports facility that you also appointed him as a member of the HTRFA Board of Directors. I've pointed out to you in the past the dangers of these types of conflicts of interest. While the regional sports facility was first approved as a construction budget of $53 million, it was subsequently increased to $80 million during the design process. Now we find yet another increase, bringing the projected construction costs to $92 million, with $79 million in financing and another $12 million in capital budget payments from the three jurisdictions, an increase of 9% over the most recent projection. And previously, when it was represented, the city would be on the hook for 64% of the annual debt service capped at $2.5 million. Now that limit is being increased under the amended support agreement, effectively to at least $3.7 million, or an increase of $1.2 million a year. In the city's agenda-mind and disclosure, it does not disclose the proposed funding terms for the note, the expected annual debt service of the new notes, the projected annual deficiency for the sports facility that we'd be on the hook for, or the projected city annual support that we can anticipate. And don't be fooled by the statement that this does not constitute a debt or pledge of faith or credit of the city. The Standard and Poor's Credit Summary of the Historic Triangle Recreation Facility's Authority General Bond Obligation summarizes their view as follows: "If revenue received by the authority from the participating members is insufficient for full debt service payments, Williamsburg has agreed to consider a supplemental appropriation to satisfy the deficiency. If the city fails to make any such appropriation, Williamsburg will add the appropriation to the annual deficiency amount for the city's next fiscal year. Therefore, we rate these obligations as an appropriation pledge of the city. We believe the city has the willingness and ability to make debt service payments regardless of any deficiencies from participating member communities." What this effectively means is the city will cover the annual debt service and operating deficiencies regardless of amount, irrespective of the potential failure of James City County or York County to make their payments. This then effectively exposes the city to $5.8 million in annual debt service, plus whatever amount the annual operating deficits are incurred over the next 28 years. When it comes up for the vote on Thursday, I'm recommending that the amended support agreement be changed to limit the city's absolute exposure and protect the city's finances in the future. When we talk about, you know, the proposed cost of the library in the forthcoming discussion, it's also helpful to keep in mind how these cost projections that are provided at a pre-designed phase are very subject to increase during the design and the construction phase. Here you saw 40% increase during the design phase of the sports facility, now we're facing another 9%. I'll talk about the projected cost increases in the library when we get to that particular topic. With respect to the solar and energy, I've got a minute left. I want to support everything that last gentleman said. You know, your predecessors acquired that land in the watershed for Watermill Reservoir for the purposes of keeping it out of the developer's hands, right? The reservoir represents our only city-owned water supply for drinking water. And, you know, for all the reasons that were stated, to denude that forest land and expose the water to the contaminants that would likely result just isn't worth the $150,000 a year payment or the maximum over 15 years, $388,000, right? The cost of any damage is going to far exceed what that would be required. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next card I have is Lisa Nichol. Welcome.
Hello. On behalf of myself and Carrie Cooper, Dean of University of Libraries at William &amp; Mary, we're here today, or I'm here today to support a new public library facility in the city of Williamsburg. As library leaders, we visit public libraries around the country and observe firsthand the impact libraries have on their citizens and communities. I think, I hope, we can all agree that libraries are a public good, an essential civic infrastructure that benefits everyone regardless of age, background, or circumstance. Supporting them and a new building is in all of our best interests. For over 50 years, the Williamsburg City Library Facility has faithfully served our residents, but its aging infrastructure now limits what it can achieve. The building, the current building's fragmented layout, limited parking, rising maintenance costs hinder both operations and accessibility, and there's no space to add new services for this community. The building simply no longer meets the needs of today's library users or the demands of a modern, connected community. A new library would do far more than replace an outdated building. It would create a flexible, energy-efficient space designed for collaboration, digital literacy, and lifelong learning. With improved infrastructure, Williamsburg could expand technology training, maker space initiatives, community programs, and prepare residents for a changing economy. Just as important, it would offer the welcoming public spaces our community needs, places that bring people together through services, outreach, and programming that strengthen the bonds between neighbors. As a city of Williamsburg resident, I urge you to fund the construction of a new Williamsburg library in the city of Williamsburg that will support the needs of community, a place for residents to connect and learn and grow from programming that strengthens bonds between neighbors. It's an investment in our city's future, an investment in connection, opportunity in community, well-being for generations to come. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next card I have is Catherine Alport. Welcome.
I'm Catherine Alport, I live at 115 Matoka Court. We arrived in James City County with two young children in tow in 1974. We moved to the city in 1980. The library has played an important role in our family's life for the last 50 years. I am here today to speak in support of the construction of the new library. I attended the series of budget hearings during the spring and summer months. I had the same worries as everyone. We are spending so much money, and how much are we going to be borrowing? At the last budget hearing, I heard the city's financial advisors talk about fairly rosy prospects, good credit ratings, good position for borrowing, and good prospects and resources for handling our debt. I thought we needed a new fire and police facilities to protect life and limb. But today, we're talking about another just as important aspect of the life of the citizens of all ages, from the children attending the storytimes at the library, all the way to the afternoon movie series that people like my 90-year-old mother enjoyed the last 10 years of her life. The library project has been waiting and waiting, sometimes even being pushed back as it stood patiently in line, sometimes set aside for other projects. But we can't ignore our needs for what enriches our lives, all the things we find in our library, intellectual pursuits, music, art, help with technology. Our library gives us a sense of community, neighbors involved with each other, exchanging ideas, sharing enjoyment of good reads, listening to others' concerns. Many good memories in a building that has served us very well. be, if not already, affected by the limitations of our current building. For the future, we need a building that will make that excellent programming possible and available to everyone in our community for the coming 50 years. I thank you for taking citizens' input into consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker's card I have is Lois Weeks. Wilding, Wilding, Louis. Sorry, I can't quite make out the penmanship, but you figured it out. Welcome. If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
The only other time I've been here was when we were working together to build this building, and the Library Foundation Board and the city and a whole lot of other folks collaborated. It's really been, it's great to come and actually be with y'all here.
Thank you. And again, I'm sorry, if you'd just state your name and address for the record.
12 years I served on that foundation board, and it was a wonderful time, and I came to admire the library staff, which was superb, the book collection, which is very, very good and relevant, and hated the building. When I went to start helping with the book note that the Library Foundation Board helps, and we sell the books that are donated, and when I went to learn how to do that, I was in that back room, which I'm sure you've been in that back room too, and it was raining, and one of the towels fell down, and either a big mouse or a little rat came right down out of the ceiling. Now, this was 15 years ago, and at that point, I realized that what we need is a really good building to go with the superb library that we've got, and I know you'll be able to do that, and thank you very much for this time.
Thank you. Next speaker's card I have is Randy Casey Rutland, please. Excuse me.
Thank you. Randy Casey Rutland, 333 Millneck Road, Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm also president of the Friends of the Williamsburg Regional Library Foundation, and in that role, and as a citizen here, I'm very enthusiastically supportive of the proposal for a new library building. I've talked a lot about the new library building and heard from a lot of people in the communities, I'm sure each of you have. Generally, people love our library. I hear a lot of enthusiastic support for the library. The one thing I hear that is a concern when we hear about the new building is really the cost of it, just the economics involved. And so I'd like to spend a minute or four minutes addressing the economics, the possible economics of the situation here. I want to remind you and say clearly, this is an unusual, it's an exceptional financial, economic opportunity for the city. I want you to look at the cost of James City County building, the library building for James City County. James City County is no Cadillac. Their cost bid on the open market trying to get the good price, the cost for that building is twice, twice, the cost per square foot of the proposed building for the city library. So if you imagine that somehow in five years, or three years, or 10 years, you're going to get a better deal, you're, I strongly believe you're wrong. This, price-wise, is an unusual opportunity for the city. Some people said we should renovate the library. Renovation is not going to be helpful. It's a red herring. It's a mistake. Let me explain to you. Let me just speak a few minutes. There was a study done in 2017 commissioned by a professional firm to look at the library building, and they considered renovation. Some of the issues they identified, and you can get a copy of this from Sandy or others, they're full reports, like 67 pages long, but the executive summary's about four or five, which is worth reading. The current library has a basement, no windows, moist, good only for storage, not actually good for storage for library stuff. The library lacks flexibility. It doesn't, it's not expandable. It's not useful for the current purposes. There is no visual connection, no line of sight between the different parts of the library. The children's area is completely out of line of sight. There are many areas in our current library where there's no line of sight from a service desk or otherwise, making it unsafe. Children's area has an entrance. We have two exterior entrances, both of which have to be staffed. It's expensive to staff that. We have four service desks, all of which have to be staffed. Expensive to staff that. The stacks, the bookshelves are structurally supportive, meaning you can't move them, meaning it's difficult to renovate, expensive to renovate. The upper level, there's a second story, is narrow, is short. The two heights together, you can't build a two-story building there. It's not enough height. There are very few windows, bringing in not enough light, especially for the children's area or other places. Staff can't monitor the various corners of the library. The library's disorienting when the patrons enter the library. This is the results from the study of eight years ago. Insufficient parking. There's insufficient parking then, insufficient parking now, and there's going to be insufficient parking in the future. The renovation plans don't work. It's going to be very costly, and it will not solve the problems in this study. It's a little bit like the fire station, a much beloved structure. Think of all the lives and buildings that were saved out of the fire station for all those years. Did you renovate the fire station? No. Sure, you could have done it. It wouldn't have solved the problems of entering and exiting fire trucks on the Lafayette Street. It wouldn't have expanded the capacity for large vehicles and for the needs of a modern city. Renovating the fire station would not work. The theater is not ADA compliant. The elevator requires staff usage to be used. It's not ADA compliant. Renovation is a red herring. So let me just say, right now, the Friends are going to be involved in a fundraising campaign. We're out there asking people to give money. We want to be able to ask people to give money to the city library. This is a rare opportunity. The cost is half the cost of what James City County is doing. The future of the library building is going to be declining in a more costly operational cost, staffing cost, all those kinds of things. It's not flexible. The services needed in the library are not going to continue to be able to provide in the library expanded parking. People that visit the library go and do shopping. Studies have shown they do shopping in businesses. We need more parking. The financial opportunities for the city are now. Waiting is a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I don't have any more speakers cards, but you are still welcome to come forward if you have anything you'd like to add. Get one in front of you. Welcome.
There. Sabrina Fairbanks, 119 Berkeley Lane in Walnut Hills. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I wanted to talk about the library, and I've been surprised, listening to people pitch how great a library is, because I didn't know anybody was doubting that. In fact, I would say they do so much there, we probably should be calling it a community center and a library. Most of the concerns that people in my circle have is the size of the library and the cost of it based on how many people will be using it. And I personally am not sure if there's been an agreement where James City County is going to stay in the regional agreement and help pay for operating costs, or if that's going to be renegotiated. So I feel like you can't, I don't know how you're going to move forward if you don't know how many people we're serving. And I remember Ms. Towers was talking about, was it 1,000 square feet per person, per citizen? But, and we talk about this as a community library, but really, if it's going to be just the city library, that's only about 10,000 full-time residents, because the students have their own library at William &amp; Mary, and it's massive and wonderful. So it's really the scope of this that is the biggest concern for people that I know and for myself. So, and, you know, there's questions about it, but really, we think we've only got about 4,400 tax-paying households and, you know, and businesses. So we would like everything, we would like a 50,000-square-foot building and community center, but we just really, I just feel like you need to wait and see what our agreements are going to be with James City County. And it's frustrating, because we had to wait while you all worked it out with the schools. And now I feel like we have to wait for the library, so it is frustrating. And I want to spend just a minute telling you, telling, switching subjects and thanking Chief Dunn and the Parking Department. They were completely helpful getting the contractors' personal vehicles and their work vehicles off of Cary Street, Griffin Avenue area, so that the residents in that area had somewhere to park. And it was, they would not take no for an answer, and Chief Dunn and Chief Butler had to finally step in and got the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Cam Walker, 416 Harriet Tubman Drive, and I'm here to support the library project and to talk a little bit about what it means to the community, reinforcing some of the things you've already heard. I'm a longtime patron of the Williamsburg Library. I began borrowing mysteries, thrillers, and bestsellers from the little building at the corner of South England and Francis Streets. I've continued that habit in the 1973, 1982, and 1998 structures, and I hope to be able to find my escape reading in the 20-whatever iteration. Although lending books and other material remains the main function of the library, there are many other services that the building on Scotland Street provides to the Williamsburg community. For example, the very affordable Dewey Decimal Concerts, the many free movies, the WRL Film Society founded by librarians Neil Hollands and Mandy Malone, the numerous book groups, the children's activities, invaluable reference material and advice, the seed exchange, the inexpensive secondhand books and magazines. All these and various special programs appeal to a broad range of citizens. Just to mention one special program, I'm probably the least likely person to be interested in a Comic-Con convention. But in September, some young family members were visiting, and when we wandered by the library, we spotted a lot of folks in some pretty fantastic costumes. So of course, the kids were entranced, and then once they discovered there was face painting in the children's section, there was no escape. While they waited in line for their decorations, I had a chance to observe the crowd of adults, teens, tweens, toddlers, and even infants of all ethnicities and genders. It was a really diverse crowd, for sure. Clearly, the library is a place for both learning and leisure, education and entertainment, a vital civic institution. One of the chants at the No Kings demonstrations has been, "This is what democracy looks like." I think we could stand outside the library and chant, "This is what opportunity looks like, this is what curiosity looks like, this is what creativity looks like, and especially, this is what community looks like." And I do hope we will soon have a new, larger building to continue to nurture and celebrate that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section, and we'll move on to background presentations and discussions. First is a presentation and discussion regarding the municipal land lease for solar and energy storage adjacent to the Waller Mill Reservoir. Mr. Trivitt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A few months ago, we were approached by a company seeking opportunities to develop surplus land in Virginia owned by municipalities for solar farms in conjunction with what they anticipated to be a release of an RFP from Dominion and a grant or some level of support through tax credits from the federal government. And so they approached a lot of localities. We were one of them. The city council asked for us to pursue that a little bit and see if there was an opportunity. The only opportunity really with surplus land of any size to support this kind of activity would be at the Waller Mill Reservoir, and so we suggested the company consider that. They did some analysis, and they are prepared today to come back with a proposal for the city council to consider. I think we're joined by members of the Synergy team, and I'll let them take over from here.
Welcome, team.
Do you want me to share my camera? Do you prefer me just to share my screen?
Oh, show your camera. We'd love to see you.
Okay, great. Came ready today. Thanks for taking the time to let us present and for us to be able to talk to you a little bit about the research and the work that we've done to see if we could bring this project to light for Williamsburg. So I have on the call with us Bill, who is the principal with Synergy Power, and Kevin, who is one of our other developers as well. So thank you for letting us present. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and I've got a PowerPoint that we put together for all of you, and I'm excited to share that information. So Synergy, just so you know, we've been around for 17-plus years. We've nationwide developed over 400 projects, over 400 megawatts of solar, so we've got a lot of experience doing this very type of work. In Virginia specifically, we've been developing for a little over five years now and have 60 megawatts contracted with Dominion and another 100 megawatts in our pipeline for further development. So from a Synergy perspective, we're in it for the long haul. We've been around for a while and continue, that's our plan, is to be around for even longer. So we, as you see here, this is one of the airports that we've installed on, the Indianapolis Airport, and that's one of the areas that we've developed, that we've done a variety of installations of development for ground mount projects, like what we're proposing for the city of Williamsburg. And as part of that, we've established a well pool of resources, like bonding capacity as you see here, and we've set that up so that when it comes time to developing these projects, that we have the resources that are needed to get a project up and running and construction starting, bonding, things like that. So overarching, this project is, the intent is to submit it into the Dominion RFP that will be closing out in February, and that is part of a larger umbrella for the renewable portfolio standard that Dominion has in the state of Virginia. There are a variety of steps to getting a project underway, and that includes land use approvals, interconnection, and doing that research that we'll share later on here that makes it so that we can find if a project would be viable or not. This next slide kind of talks a little bit more about that bonding capacity that I mentioned earlier, with the ability that bonding, having that 300 million of bonding capacity available for payment bonds if they are needed, or project financing, things of that nature. So that's just one of the tools that we have in our back pocket here. Synergy's been around for a while, and we've established some good relationships, and one of those is with Comet, and I'll let Bill talk a little bit about this relationship we have with Comet.
Yeah, my name is Bill, one of the principals at Synergy. It's a real privilege to meet all of you. We have been around for a while. We've learned a lot of good lessons, and we're pretty creative in trying to create good community benefits for the projects that we design and install. This right here is a partnership we initiated recently with the largest utility in Illinois, Commonwealth Edison, and it's a $10-million partnership where we provide their low-income customers. These are mostly customers on the Light Heat Program with benefits or energy grants to offset rising electricity costs so that they can keep the lights on, keep the heater on... These are mostly customers on the Light Heat Program with benefits or energy grants to offset rising electricity costs so that they can keep the lights on, keep the heater on when it gets very cold in Illinois. So we hope to bring more programs like this to other regional utilities. For instance, with Dominion, we're working more with them as we get deeper into the Virginia market. And we think it's a huge benefit to put up good clean energy projects that also benefit the community members, like low-income customers.
And to that point, this is an example of one project that we are working with another county in Virginia. But tying to this last slide, I just want to highlight here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but on the bottom of the screen, just above net benefit, you know, there's a row that talks about donations to the county. And that's right in line with just what Bill was saying is, while this may not be directly with the utility, we do work with counties, cities like Williamsburg to, on top of the lease payments that would come from a project like this. We also view you as our partner. And so we make donations to the city, the county, and try to establish that goodwill between both entities. In this particular instance, this project is very similar to what we would do with Williamsburg. Size-wise of the project, the 20 megawatts, on the amount of acres, about 100 acres as well. And you can see the, the net benefit after Synergy makes the upfront payment, plus the lease payments that you see there, that's over the course of the 15 years. There's the five-year operation payment that Synergy makes of our own volition as well. And then there is a 15-year revenue share. That's a state program. So that part is something that the state requires. And then as I get, as I mentioned before, the donations to the county. Very similar to what we are proposing from a net benefit perspective for, for Williamsburg. And I'll actually just go ahead and skip to that slide. This is what we're proposing. These are kind of the preliminary costs based off of our due diligence of the site that you mentioned at the top of our presentation. So this is based off of 162 acres, as you see there, the lease payments total of over 4 million. And again, similar, similar row items that we saw on that last slide, we're paying an upfront payment to the city. That's broken out in those two payments, the five-year option, our operation payment that Synergy pays over the space of five years. And then again, the 15-year revenue share. One thing to point out on that, even though it is a state program, there is some flexibility in developers on how much they pay up for that. So there's a max escalator of 10% that they can opt to choose to pay that amount or not. We automatically go to that 10% right out of the gate. So that's something, again, just to kind of show our goodwill in the process of going through a development and doing a solar and energy storage project is that we're trying to be good partners and, and maximize that net benefit for the city. And then again, the donations to the city, we would like to donate about $10,000 or that $10,000 to 12 of the city's first responders. So this is what it would look like specifically for Williamsburg from a net benefit, from an economic perspective. From a solar-on-the-ground perspective, this is what it potentially would look like. So we have two parcels that we're working with. They're listed down here in the bottom right corner of the site plan that you see. The parcel one is about a little over 1,000 acres. We're only working within that north, I guess you'd say northeast parcel or portion of the parcel. We did some preliminary work where we tried to steer clear of wetlands and tributaries that go into Waller Reservoir. We do know that the county, York County, has a 200-foot setback. So we tried to make sure that we steered clear of the, of those setbacks even. So there's that early state diligence that we've done, or early county diligence that we've done in preparing this preliminary site plan. So all in all, the two arrays that you see here total about 19.8 megawatts. And there's also an eight-megawatt battery that we have located on the site as well. One other point that I want to just highlight is, I don't know how well you can see this on your screen, but this dotted hash line here is EOH, that's existing overhead lines. And that is where we would tie in two Dominion lines. And then those Dominion lines, excuse me, would then go to a couple of substation possibilities. That's all tied back to the interconnection process that we'll delve in a little deeper in a couple of more slides. But from a boots-on-the-ground perspective, this is what it would potentially look like here for, for Williamsburg. And then this, this picture here is just a depiction of the profile view of, I'll just turn this on the side here a little bit and move it so you can see of the side profile of a single access tracker, which is what we'd be presenting here. So just to help give a little bit more of a visual on what that would look like. And from all of this, I kind of mentioned a couple of things. There's interconnection, there's going through York County, there's of course getting city of Williamsburg approval on this. So there's, all of that factors into some timelines. We have to build up to the point of submitting this RFP that's due in February. So this Gantt chart tries to account for all of those inputs, the, the cut with York, going through getting, of course, first, let me start off at the top actually, executing the lease option, which is initially just gives us the permission to input an interconnection application with Dominion. It's not the full-blown lease, it's just a one-page that allows us to get that information from Dominion to confirm that due diligence that we've already done. At the end of the day, Dominion is going to give us their feedback on what it takes to interconnect with those power lines that we saw on the previous slide. Then there's also going through title, going through floodplains, wetlands, endangered species, all of those environmental checks that we need to do as some of the due diligence that is required as part of our standard operating procedure, but also as part of this RFP checklist that we're required to include in our submittal. And then also the cut. And then of course, part of that, as I mentioned, is the interconnection. And then as you see there at the bottom, the February timeline for submitting that into the, the process for Dominion. The start of construction would range about a year, year and a half out from some of these dates. The most crucial kind of milestones that you're seeing on this Gantt are those kind of longer bars that show those timelines. So that said, there are a couple of things that my understanding is that are, might be a point of concern that we wanted to get ahead of in, in considering a project like this for the city. What happens post-construction? What happens if Synergy doesn't exist anymore? There's a couple of mitigants that we have in place and they're actually part of our standard operating procedure. But first, I just want to reemphasize that we've been around for a long time. We don't plan on going anywhere. And as you can see here, with 60 megawatts in contract with Dominion and another 100 megawatts in the pipeline, our plan is to be around for a long time. As part of our standard operating procedure, there is a decommissioning plan that is in place that at the end of that lease term, we would, we would come out, Williamsburg does not have to do anything. We would come out, remove the panels and return the site to the condition it was prior to construction start. And that's just one measure that we have in place for kind of post-construction or post-end of term of the lease. Regarding tree harvesting and cutting, one of the interesting points, and I cited this down at the bottom of the slide, is yes, we'd be clearing about 162 acres. The carbon sequestered from this project, again, almost a 20-megawatt solar project and eight-megawatt battery project, would be, just the solar alone is equivalent of about 20, over 20,000 acres of carbon sequestered from US forests in one year. And then also for another, just kind of scale, is CO2 emissions from over almost 3,300 homes. So that's based off of what the production would be off of this nearly 20-megawatt solar project. And regarding the harvesting, less than any cost for harvesting, all of that profit would go to the city of Williamsburg. So that's something that we can work with Williamsburg on. Regarding water quality, I kind of addressed this a little bit earlier, but there are York County setbacks that are required for tributary streams and reservoirs. So we are 200 feet away from those. And then there's watershed management regulations that we, as part of our development processes, doing the due diligence and complying with those regulations. As part of our standard operating procedure, materials are long toxic. We do these studies that, we do a desktop study, but then we also have boots on the ground, so we'll do the wetland delineations and study those impacts as part of our normal operating procedure. And if required, we can even do wetland banks. So that's something that is all part of our process. Speaking of this, I mentioned this a couple of times, our due diligence was seeing what might be available from the Dominion side of things. Is there available capacity on the lines and at the substations? So that's something that we did search early on. And as you might notice here, there are these purple lines. Those indicate a 34 KV line, which that goes back to tying into a distributed generation line with Dominion that makes the process of interconnection just a little bit faster than say, a transmission project that takes three to five years. This distributed generation, the 34 KV lines, is a much shorter timeline than that three to five years, six to eight to 18 months, just depending on the situation. But we have done this due diligence to see, one, that we've got 34 KV lines immediately adjacent to those parcels, right where we're tying in, that's no coincidence. And then also making sure that we are proximal to substations, the Waller substations just south of those two sites that we're proposing. And then there's also the Lightfoot Substation, as you see this green pin, kind of the northwestern section of, of this map. So we've got options, which is nice. And we both see they, they have available capacity. So that's the next really longer timeline that we want to, we would propose getting a lease option in place to get our foot in the door, to see what that interconnection application comes back with, so that we can then move forward, accounting for of course all of the, what city of Williamsburg requirements are to moving a project forward like this. We do have a couple of examples of some other projects that we've done, like type size, I mentioned this one earlier, is this 25-megawatt at the Indianapolis Airport. In some ways, that almost might feel more difficult because we have to go through FAA. But you know, six of one, half of this and the others, it just depends on who you're talking to, right? And then a couple of other projects that we've done, these ones happen to be examples in Illinois. But I believe that we have some great opportunity here with, with the city of Williamsburg. And I really feel like this project here is something that can be viable. Next steps would be to see what you all think and then go on to those other next steps that I've mentioned, like the lease option. And that's the end of our presentation. Bill or Kevin, did you want to share anything?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And I don't mean to cut Bill and the other one off, but I think we, we've certainly heard a lot and recognize that whatever decision council wishes to move forward, is this is just the beginning of the process. I do have a question though. When we talk, and obviously you know this is next to our reservoir and it's on property that the city has spent decades purchasing to protect the watershed to the reservoir. Would you, would you argue that the impact of tearing, taking these trees out and adding solar panels would improve the quality of the reservoir?
I, I couldn't say necessarily that it would be really any different. A lot of times when we're, when we've constructed a, a solar project, we're going through, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so I can see you all and talk to you at the same time. When we're, when we're building a project, we're complying with SWIFT, we're complying with, you know, these setbacks. And so part of that also is making sure that we're, when we have native pollinators or when we have native plants in the area, we're making sure that those help with the, the local flora and fauna. So granted, they're not going to be trees. I think that it would be almost like a swap of, granted, you don't have trees, you have solar panels there, but you do still have native plants and, and grasses and, and indigenous to that area that you can customize that into really what, what you want, if you don't want to go with native.
Yeah, Dusty, I think to supplement what Joy's saying, the one added benefit is whenever we do these projects, it's kind of a, a reset in terms of expertise looking at the project, right? So you're going to have your professional engineers look at the interconnection so that we make sure the lines are up to date, the infrastructure is going to be there to not have an issue with the project. And the same would go with stormwater management, runoff evaluation. All the experts would relook at this entire site and make sure that we're in full compliance with Virginia rules, especially through Department of Environmental Quality. So that, that's the one thing that's good about these projects is that it's kind of like renovating an older area, right? You've got expert eyes revisiting the site to make sure basically it's going to be up to code and that the project will not have a negative impact to the site.
Okay. So you, I, well, I think, you know, there are compliance issues that you would have to address, but, and I guess I'm trying to, to hear, and I, and I think I know the answer, but taking away what's there natively to add solar panels, even if you come in with underbrush and, and we can work on controlling, you know, outfalls from, and sediment and all those types of things. I'm, I'm not hearing that whatever we would consider, if in considering this, it improves the environment for the water. You know, if this, and I'll just cut to the chase, if we were talking about land next to an airport, the impact would be pretty negligible. And maybe the impact here would be negligible, but there's still an impact and that concerns me. So with that.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point.
So I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Dan if he had any comments.
Yeah, actually I have a few questions and forgive me if I ask something that you already answered in your presentation, because at times during the presentation, the echo I was having trouble hearing. But could you talk a little bit more about why Williamsburg?
Well, actually, we, we feel municipalities, and we work with a lot, probably over 15 municipalities. It's not just Williamsburg, right? I think what we try to do with our team is do the upfront diligence to see where needles can align that we can thread. Needles for, the interconnection has to be right. The federal tax credits have to still be available, right? You have to have sufficient land that's not sensitive where we can't build on land that's like wetland, right? So you're really threading about 10 different needles. And it's only, in our opinion, the fortunate jurisdictions that have the location that makes sense. And then they're working with a team like ours that's fairly integrated, that's got the experience to basically take it to the finish line. And then there's significant community and economic benefits that flow locally because you just happen to have a site that checks all the because you just happen to have a site that checks all the boxes that you need to check. So this does not happen for all municipalities, right? For us, it's maybe uh ten percent of the municipalities that we investigate will have an opportunity like this. And yeah, some may say, nope, doesn't matter, it's not for us. But I think uh quite a few will say, you know what? We could use the economic stimulation and it's good for our community. So it just depends ultimately on on people making decisions for what makes sense for their community.
So uh another question. So in for for the long-term operation throughout the lifetime of the facility, is that operated by Synergy, the utility, or some third-party?
No, we will own, yeah, Synergy will own and operate uh the facility that's there, right? Because we we're, we're the most vested to make sure that it is gonna be run well, it's maintained well, to maximize production. Uh Dominion is likely gonna be the power purchaser, and we want to keep them happy so that they stay in their power contract with us.
And then what, the lifespan of the solar farm? We talked about a fifteen-year lease. Is that, could that lease be renewed to go further? What's I, my ignorance on on solar farms is what's the lifespan of that solar farm?
Definitely, they will go up to forty years, right? It's like the satellites you see in space. Some of them have solar modules that have been in space for over sixty years because there's, it's solid state, there's no moving parts, very uh very few opportunities for it to break down. So it has a very long useful life. We start at fifteen years because that is the the typical contract for power purchase. That's a typical Dominion contract. But most of those contracts will get extended because, as you're probably aware, Dominion is seeing unprecedented demand for power, right? There's a lot of things going on uh that's growing the load profile in Virginia, like data centers uh and electrification. So Dominion needs the power, and this is one of the primary ways to get it, through clean energy projects that developers like Synergy will deliver for Dominion.
Thank you. And then on, I know you said in your, you you have standard practices for decommissioning of a site, and you return it to the state you found it, but you you really can't do that if you take down a hundred and sixty-two acres of trees. You could replant, but you're not, you're doing the best you can to restore it to its original state. And then I did have a concern similar to the mayor's, is you showed several photographs of airports, but I didn't see any photographs of watershed property that where you've worked that have um a solar farm adjacent to our a reservoir. So um that, I agree, that does raise some doubts and concerns for me. That's all the questions I have right now.
Good to share.
Great. Hi, thank you very much for the presentation. I have just a couple of questions. Uh and I appreciate that also that you've, you know, you mentioned that you all have been doing this a long time. You have a lot of experience to draw from. So um hopefully, that can inform, like, the the questions I'm about to ask, too, because I, like the Vice Mayor said, I don't have a deep experience with this. But you mentioned that, you you know, there's a lot of due diligence that has happened and and upfront diligence uh about all sorts of considerations for a project like this. And and obviously, you know, from previous questions, and I share them as well, concern about impacts on the watershed and impacts on the um on the water quality and environment. And your upfront diligence, I understand, sort of says, you know, we do the setbacks, and and you know, that that is, that's good enough kind of at this stage to think that maybe things are okay. But my question would be, based on projects that maybe you've done before, or, you know, think your your normal way of working, what, at what point, what if you're like, oh, wait a minute, actually, this would be very, this would not be as good, right? The water quality would suffer. Or maybe we have a concern as a community that, well, it looked okay, but actually, now that we've actually dug into it a little bit more, this this would be detrimental in a way. How do you account for discovering of information as you move forward in a project like this that could actually turn something that maybe looked attractive to be not acceptable to the community?
You know, part of, um, Bill, I see you unmuted, but I'll be really fast.
Go ahead.
One of the things that we do, a- as mentioned, we do this due diligence with the boots on the ground, the wetland delineations. And so um there are, that's done on every single project. And there are projects where there are wetlands and streams that we modify our site, if need be, um to go around those those sites or to um to to set up so that when we're doing a project that we're, um, you know, we're able to mitigate some of those those concerns with wetland and water quality. Uh some of the early research that um that we have with some of these other solar sites and far, as far as water qualities over, I mean, solar is not new, and that has been around for many years. And and the research says that there is not a lot or any really, that these are non-toxic, that they don't impact water quality, and that if you're following these guidelines even so, um you're setting your, you're adding those buffers, literally and physi-, uh literally and metaphorically to the the watershed so that you're protecting that at all costs.
I would just add, you know, in, you, it's not like you have to trust Synergy. Uh a project like this will reach uh almost a hundred million dollars to build. That's why we tend to have, we grow our bonding capacity uh because we don't default on these projects, right? That's how you build up your credit to get more bonding capacity. And there's just gonna be a lot of professional engineers. And we encourage the city to also hire a group, uh your own professional engineers to kind of independent independently audit our work. Uh but a lot of people will have to sign off, a lot of experts, civil engineers, right? Grading engineers, right? Stormwater experts. So this project will not move forward unless a lot of expert eyes take a look and they sign off on the design. And that's how you get comfortable that it's gonna work out.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my second question is actually uh about falling on the Vice Mayor's question about decommissioning, because that's something that I was a bit concerned about as well. Uh what, especially in a place where if you cut down on the trees, you can't really restore it. What are some challenges, again, based on all of your experience that you've had, what are some challenges that come up for communities when it comes to decommissioning? Have you, have you, you know, is there something that we don't know what we don't know, um thinking ahead, that that communities have faced when it comes to decommissioning a project like this?
Yeah, so there's been a lot of solar uh already put up around the US. Probably the run rate right now is about forty, fifty gigawatts a year. And when you have that kind of number for decommissioning, it is gotten to be a very standardized process. So what happens is, again, you get an independent engineering group. What they'll do is they'll decide, okay, how much is it gonna cost to uh remove all the equipment at the end of their useful life and put the ground back to where it was? We may not be replanting trees, but the ground will be uh put back to its, uh as close as possible to its original state. And they come up with an a cost estimate. And then they actually make uh developers like us uh get a bond on it. So it's not our credit that's gonna be around. It's a, it's a bond of a investment-grade credit support provider, like these large insurance companies, that basically put up a bond to make sure that if Synergy doesn't make it to the outer years, that the bond will take over and a construction company will be able to decommission the system and put the ground back as close as possible to its original state.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh thank you for the presentation. As you said, energy demand is only increasing, so I think it's helpful for us to look at alternate energy um possibilities. And that's what I view this as, as a possibilities. I don't have any questions per se. I think the concerns that I've heard from residents regarding the tree clearing impact to water, Waller Mill, the erosion, um have all been addressed by my colleagues. So I just look forward to learning, learning more and looking into this as a possibility. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, well, thank you for the presentation, and especially as we have this discussion on how we can diversify our revenue streams and also investment in our community as well. I do have two questions that came to mind. Um we've talked a little bit about um the impact, especially where the land is located. Can you maybe expand upon um some concrete examples where similar, um I guess, installation has occurred and where no, like, maybe minimal impacts have um been received? I didn't word that well, but I can also reward it.
Yeah, so uh we've been in locations, I think the examples we showed were were airports because uh that just happened to be a lot of locations where municipal airports have buffer space. Uh and some of those locations, like at Rockford Airport, there was a lot of uh uh tree overgrowth, right? That actually, by clearing that area, it was an ancillary benefit uh to the airport because of air traffic uh safety concerns. Uh but once we clear it, uh our projects have very minimal moving parts. So they're basically steel posts that go into the ground, and they don't really impact the ground more than the the steel post uh dimension, right? It's basically your typical steel I-beam structure that goes right into the ground, and they go uh down by about uh six to eight feet. And they just stay there for a very long time. And above ground, it's just modules that slowly track the sun throughout the day. Uh so it's very minimal moving parts, and the potential for it to cause a major concern in terms of uh water quality locally is is minimal. Like Joy was saying, you know, these modules are made out of basically sand. It's it's silicon, and then they're encased in glass and aluminum. And so those materials tend to not be the materials that people are primarily concerned about in terms of uh local toxicity. And there are plenty of reports we can show uh to that effect. And it's really just uh and a a good revenue stream. And if there are extra concerns uh with the local residents, uh we've also done projects where we take periodic, like every year, every two years, we take tests of the local soil and the local water to see if there is any uh negative impacts. And usually, uh there is none, right? So I think there are uh a lot of ways that uh the concerns addressed uh are being raised locally can be addressed as we go down the process of exploring whether or not this could be a very viable, good project for the city.
Well, thank you for expanding on that point. My second question is in regards to um their lifespan. We've talked a little bit about, um, you know, sometimes solar panels break. So um in the event where maintenance and operational costs differ and change over the fifteen years, will that change the city's net benefit?
No, it won't, because uh when we finance these projects, again, there are a lot of experts that get involved. These are fairly large infrastructure projects. And so, for instance, our lender will bring their set of experts, the attorneys, the independent engineers uh that sign off on this stuff, and they require a lot of reserves. Meaning, hey, if worst-case scenario, things go very wrong, how does this project still maintain itself? And that's the conservative approach that we have to take to satisfy our funding partners. And you would get the benefit of that, right? Because their review is very rigorous before they deploy, let's say, fifty-plus million dollars on a project like this. So they're gonna make sure we do not default on this project, and that benefits everyone involved.
Well, thank you.
Well, Joy, Bill, Kevin, thank you for the presentation. Um I think it's been very helpful for all of us to to learn more about what it is that you're proposing. I guess we'll we'll be in touch.
Okay, well, thanks for your time and hearing us out.
Yep, thank you so much.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, takes us now to uh Item B is the updated presentation and discussion regarding the recommendation of the Williamsburg uh or the Library Evaluation Committee, Ms. Sandy Towers. Welcome.
Well, good afternoon or evening, um Mayor Pons, members of City Council. Thanks again for this opportunity to speak to you. In August, I shared a bit of history about the Williamsburg Regional Library. I gave you background on the Williamsburg Library Evaluation Committee process and offered a resolution on behalf of the committee regarding next steps. So tonight, I'd like to welcome Chris Garies to the dais to to give a little bit of information from his perspective as a member of the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees. And then I'll I'll talk about some of the questions that you guys raised at the last meeting and address those. Chris?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Garies, and I'm a member of the Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees. Uh I've served on the board now for eight years, uh being appointed in twenty-seventeen. I'm also a resident of the city. Our chair, Nina Simone, was not able to be here this evening uh because of a work obligation. And she asked if I would uh come to express, uh on behalf of the Board of Trustees, our support for the construction of a new library in downtown Williamsburg. You all, as our elected city council, have a really consequential decision to make about an important question. That is, should we build a new library downtown? And I'll go ahead and jump to my conclusion. Yeah, I I I think we should. I also want to take a moment just to uh acknowledge that um public buildings have always been quite important to me uh in my career. I've been involved in a number of projects uh in my uh more than twenty-five years here in the community. Early in my career, I worked for the school division when Lafayette was facing overcrowding. Some of you may remember that time. And we had to make a decision about whether or not to uh to build a a new high school, to uh expand the size of Lafayette High School. I undertook that study and I uh presented the report as well, on it, wrote the report and presented the report as well. And ultimately, we decided to downsize Lafayette High School, renovate it, put some windows in it because it was originally built as an open concept school that didn't quite take. And also then to build Jamestown High School at the same size, the same size that subsequently, several years later, we built War Hill. It was a good decision, the right decision at the time. I was also assistant principal and then principal at Berkeley Middle School when we undertook the renovation there. We decided in that situation to expand the capacity of Berkeley Middle School by a third. Uh some of you know the shape of Berkeley, it's shaped like an O, and we put a W on the back, essentially, two academic wings and a new library as well. Tried to expand the common space of the cafeteria, which is difficult to do. Uh and so that cafeteria was never quite sized right after we did the renovation and expansion. But it was the right, uh a a good decision at the time, and it served our community quite well. Uh I'm a faculty member in the School of Education at William &amp; Mary, and I served as associate dean at the time that the decision was made to repurpose the community hospital and to make that the location of uh, to give that to William &amp; Mary to make a location for the new School of Education. So you know, the School of Education was in Jones Hall, and we were renting nine different buildings around town to do everything else that we did as a school of education. And originally, we were going to renovate uh the hospital. We were quite excited about that because we were all going to get private bathrooms. Uh alas, another feasibility study found that it was not only cost ineffective, but it was really cost prohibitive. And the decision was made to raise the community hospital. My kids still have not forgiven me for that because they were all three born there. Uh but to raise the hospital and build a new uh a new school of education, which has been, I think, again, the right decision. And we've been there now for fifteen years. Public spaces are very, very important. Um it, from a very personal perspective, I value libraries, and I appreciate all the comments that folks have made about how they value libraries. I think that's not really up for debate in a community like Williamsburg. I, too, see them as vital institutions for a free, open democracy. And I'm taken by a phrase that I learned several, a couple of years ago when uh we had our community book, Palaces for the uh for the People. Uh that phrase was uh came from Andrew Carnegie at the turn of the century. And uh as he was going about his great philanthropy, he he used this phrase to describe libraries, palaces for the people. And he didn't mean that term palace in a way that's that's intended to be ostentatious. And he didn't mean that term palace in a way that's intended to be ostentatious or self-aggrandizing. He meant it as a way of saying that public spaces like libraries should be dignified and that they should represent in both form and function, but the way they look and what they do, they should represent values of education, community, and civic mindedness. I quite like that and I think that we all appreciate that. I also like that I've lived during an era where I've seen a lot of things change over time. Typewriters look a whole lot different than they did my senior year in high school. And I got an electric typewriter for my graduation gift. Phones look very, very different than they did when I was a young person. And libraries have changed too. And libraries have needed to change. The means by which libraries make information freely available to people, provide educational opportunities and cultural enrichment, connect people with each other's and with civic life here at the end of the first quarter of the 21st century. We're already there, guys. It suggests that libraries have to change and evolve and I'm so excited to see how our library has. And it's largely credit to Sandy and her team at the library. I also value libraries as a father, as a community member, and as a taxpayer. And I want to speak briefly about those points. As a, my, I've been here since 1991 in the community. I thought I would be here for a one-year master's degree. That turned into a doctoral degree, meeting my wife, having a career, and raising three children as well. We lived in the county for 25 years, but 11 years ago, we were able to pursue a longtime dream and we moved into the city. In fact, we bought our house on November 11th, 11 years ago. So tomorrow's our anniversary of moving into town. During those decades of raising our kids, we made countless trips to the Williamsburg Library and to the Croker Branch out in the county. Getting a library card in the Garrys family was a rite of passage. They participated in summer reading programs again and again and again. We attended programs and performances as a family. We met other young families there as well. The libraries were very important to our family. As our kids have grown up, as they've gone to college, as they've moved out and are now adulting, I've learned that word now, they're adulting, I now, my engagement with the library has changed. I now see it as a community porch, which is a term I learned just about a year, sorry, about a week ago, as I was reading an article, a community porch. I quite like that. I tend to come to the library when I'm attending community meetings. I like to browse books. I like to read in the quiet rooms among the stacks because we still have those. I enjoy cultural events in the auditorium and it's a place where I connect with acquaintances. As a taxpayer, I value libraries. I'm grateful that more than 50 years ago, community leaders had the vision, the civic commitment, and the financial know-how to build a library in 1973. That subsequent leaders had the vision commitment and marshaled the resources to expand and renovate it in the early 80s and again to do that in the 1990s. We, as a community and my family, have benefited from people's decisions, people we've never met. Money that we did not contribute ourselves, but someone else did. And I believe in the notion of paying it forward. I would like to think, I like the idea that my tax money is going towards something that's going to persist longer than I do. I think that that's a wonderful thing. As a board member, I'd like to share a few thoughts as well. The need to address the condition and capacity of the Williamsburg Library is not new. The Board of Trustees identified the need 18 years ago in 2007, when a professional facility study was undertaken. That study identified issues regarding capacity and design for a growing population and heavy usage by the patrons. In ensuing years, the trustees and the Williamsburg Regional Library leadership team have exercised responsible stewardship by carefully considering our facility needs. To punctuate a few points, in 2018, we commissioned an architectural assessment of the existing downtown library again. Also in 2018, we systematically collected community input through focus groups and surveys. In 2020, we incorporated plans for the new downtown library in our strategic plan for the Williamsburg Regional Library system. And we also identified and reaffirmed our commitment to having a third branch in the Williamsburg Regional Library system, which would be the second branch in the county. In 2022, we conducted additional community input sessions as well. And based upon a preponderance of community sentiment and support of a new library, downtown library, as well as the professional assessments that we had over the years, we made the resolution that Sandy mentioned again, and you all are quite familiar with, in 2023, in support of a new downtown library. In the spring of 2024, you and council solicited design proposals for the new downtown library and three qualified proposals were received. We're quite excited about that. And based on the review of initial conceptual designs, past projects, proposed timelines and cost bids, you, City Council contracted with Horgan to take the next step into looking at the next steps of initial conceptual design, looking at alternatives for parking, visual aesthetics, site placement, auditorium space, and programming as well. One of the most exciting parts, I think, of this process for me has been this past May, when the Horgan team and with City Council input as well as the input of the Evaluation Committee, undertook two open community input sessions. These were very well attended and provided attendees with an in-person opportunity to learn about the proposed project and to provide feedback by way of a transparent, fair, well-designed survey. I really liked that survey. I think we did a good job with it and got authentic information back. Horgan, along with the staff and members of the appointed committee, were able to review the survey responses and look at the data from those as well. I personally read every single survey. I coded them on a piece of legal paper just to see what the responses were and I so enjoyed reading the comments from community members who attended those sessions. While there were those, some respondents that expressed concern about the cost of the project and some others who expressed favor for renovating the existing building, I can quite honestly say that the vast majority of responses were overwhelmingly supportive of the building, a new library in downtown. A great many of the respondents provided valuable design ideas, preferences for programming and aesthetics, and quite frankly, heartwarming comments about what the library meant to them and meant to their families as well. Again, we've been working on this question for many, many, many years. And that's okay that we have been. But that's occurred over various permutations of the Board of Trustees. I wasn't on the board in 2007 when the initial study was done. So the board is overturned. City Council has overturned leadership and the library itself is overturned. And yet we come to the same conclusion. We need a new library. We know that our library is an award-winning library. It's excellence. It's excellent. I think there are four measures of, I think there are four, there are four measures of excellence that really get at this, or margins of excellence that I think occur. I really credit, as I mentioned, the leadership of the library itself. Sandy, Betsy before her, and her team are just extraordinary people, absolutely committed to, to public and civic life and to the running of an excellent library. I think also, actually I know, I feel very strongly about this, being a regional system makes so much difference. There are financial benefits to that. It gives us, it gives us a kind of unified strength of being a regional system. And I think that's given us a margin of excellence. The Friends are absolutely part of that. Friends of the Williamsburg Regional Library Foundation. They are extraordinary supporters of the library in so many ways. And then I think the comments made by my fellow community members coming out here, people have a sense of identity with the library in Williamsburg. The vision for the new library itself, for the library building here in downtown, is one of being a vibrant cultural hub that will not only house books and digital resources, but also offer performance space, design studios, and community gathering areas, as well as additional parking. This is not just about replacing an old building. It's really about investing in a future where everyone, from toddlers to seniors, has access to lifelong learning, technology, cultural enrichment, and community connection. I mean every single word that I'm saying. In our best judgment, now is the time for Williamsburg to build a new library. The need is evident. The due diligence has been taken for over 18 years, over multiple permutations of the trustees, council, and library leadership itself. The cost of the design build is very attractive and the capacity, location, and the design, conceptual design of the proposed building aligns well with our strategic plan as a library system, as well as for the city of Williamsburg. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I hope you agree. This is the time for us to show our leadership and take the step forward to build a new downtown library. With that, I'll turn it over to Sandy to share more about our perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm gonna be, do my best to make this work.
Do.
All right. So after the August presentation, you had some questions, which I would like to answer today. I'd also like to reiterate and echo Chris's sentiment that we have an urgent need for a new library building and how that modernized library space will benefit the city of Williamsburg. So, to recap, in August, I shared the activities of the Library Evaluation Committee. The committee, which included two members each from City Council, the city of Williamsburg staff, WRL Board of Trustees, the Friends of WRL Foundation and WRL staff, met multiple times from October of 2024 through March of 2025. In April, City Council authorized Mr. Trivett to enter into the Phase 1 interim agreement with Horgan Time Off Moss, which included coordinating public input sessions. In May, two public input sessions were held and a public survey was conducted. In August, the LEC recommended that City Council proceed to the construction phase with Horgan Time Off Moss. I also shared this graph, which shows the population growth and library square footage. The yellow line represents the Virginia State Standard for Public Library Square Footage based on population. The black line represents WRL square footage. As you can see, WRL briefly met the state standard for square footage in the year 2000. This illustration shows the original Williamsburg Library Building in yellow. And it shows the major renovations that have taken place in 1982, that's the pink side with the theater, and in 1998, which is the green section of the drawing. After my August presentation, City Council members asked several follow-up questions. Slide number one, question number one, have we considered renovation versus new construction? In 2017, the WRL Board of Trustees contracted with RRM Luke Meyer Architects to do an assessment of the Williamsburg Library Buildings and include recommendations on renovation versus new construction. Their analysis concluded that the cost of renovating the library, not including the theater, could be accomplished for a minimal cost savings, but would not solve the fundamental problems with the current building, including inadequate parking, accessibility, and a sprawling design which requires additional staffing points. These photos illustrate how a new library building offers opportunities for natural light, flexible and varied seating areas, accessibility improvements, appropriate digital infrastructure, and more space for meetings and programs. A new library building would offer more usable square footage within a smaller footprint and provide twice as many parking spaces as are currently available. The second question that you asked was if James City County builds the library they have proposed at the new government center, how will that affect the usage of the Williamsburg Library? New libraries, especially those with innovative new amenities, attract new library users. If both new libraries are built, this will result in increased usage for both new libraries. If only the James City County Government Center Library is built and the Williamsburg Library is not rebuilt, I would expect that some users will choose to go to the Government Center Library rather than the Williamsburg Library due to the challenges of existing, using the existing Williamsburg Library, including parking, accessibility, and the lack of programming space. This reduction in visitors could have a negative economic impact on surrounding businesses. The third question you asked was, what is the economic impact of the Williamsburg Library? So in 2018, the library issued an online survey and conducted focus groups to gain an understanding about how people use the library. 3,130 people responded to the survey. In addition, 125 people attended the focus group meetings. So I apologize for the tiny font on this, but I actually took a screenshot of the actual survey results from that time. So the, in the survey, we specifically asked respondents to tell us what they did before and after visiting the Williamsburg Library. 64.2% of the respondents said that they shop or dine in Merchant Square or downtown businesses. 51.8% of respondents said they attend downtown events such as the farmer's market, concerts, and festivals before or after their library visit. Libraries have always been places where people come to learn, explore, and connect. Spaces whose true value is hard to measure because of all they offer to their communities. Today, they also play a vital role in bringing people together and supporting local economies, attracting visitors in ways that many traditional hubs like offices no longer can. Libraries are economic drivers for communities. In fact, a 2025, October 2025 Bloomberg article said cities looking to revive downtowns are increasingly leveraging the ability of public libraries to draw crowds and encourage economic development. The fourth question you asked was, in what ways do evolving patterns of library use influence the demand for new spaces? Does the increase in eBooks change the space needs of a modern library? Public libraries are experiencing a shift in how they are perceived by their communities and society. No longer just places for books, libraries are viewed as anchors and centers for community life. From offering free technology workshops, small business centers, spaces for community connection, and innovative programs and services, libraries are transforming communities. Specialized spaces like digital memory labs, recording studios, senior lounges, tween and teen spaces, and maker spaces provide evidence that libraries are continuing to evolve beyond the traditional focus on collection. Digital materials, including eBooks and downloadable audiobooks, continue to grow, now making up 28% of our total circulation. However, print circulation has also risen, showing an 11% increase in fiscal year 25 compared to fiscal year 24. This growth in digital use does not reduce the library's need for physical shelf space. But I want to highlight another major area that the library helps address, and that is mental health. The 2023 Surgeon General's Report that Natalie referred to earlier, Our Epidemic of Loneliness and Isolation, stated that nearly half of U.S. adults report measurable loneliness. The report cites social isolation as a cause for increased risk of depression, dementia, and early death. The mortality impact of being socially disconnected is similar to that caused by smoking up to 15 cigarettes a day. The report went on to further state that seniors are particularly vulnerable due to mobility limits, loss of peers, and retirement transitions. The Surgeon General's Advisory Report identifies community spaces as key to restoring social connection. Organizations that formerly provided social connection like churches and social clubs either no longer exist or are being utilized with much less regularity. Libraries are vital social infrastructure that fills that gap. They are free, inclusive, and trusted. Libraries are accessible third places that invite casual interaction and belonging. New library designs encourage engagement and connection with innovative and inviting features such as cafes, gardens, event spaces, and flexible seating. Additional meeting room space allow increased program offerings including book clubs, intergenerational workshops, community art, and hangout spaces for teens, tweens, and seniors, not altogether. These reimagined spaces foster warmth, creativity, and inclusion. Improving the health of our community by combating social isolation is good for all of us. Public libraries are vital community institutions that serve people at every stage of life. For young children, they offer storytimes, early literacy programs, and spaces For young children, they offer storytimes, early literacy programs, and spaces to play and grow. For students, library provide, libraries provide access to research tools and technology. Adults turn to libraries for lifelong learning, job search support, and digital skill building, while older adults find opportunities for connection, enrichment, and discovery. Throughout our lives, the library evolves right alongside us, meeting our changing needs and offering a friendly place where everyone belongs. Investing in libraries is fundamentally an investment in people. Libraries are not just about books, they're about opportunity, access, and community. They provide safe, welcoming spaces where neighbors connect, families learn, and individuals find support through life's transitions. By funding libraries, we strengthen the social fabric of our communities. We ensure that knowledge, resources, and support are freely available to all. A strong library system reflects a community's values and commitment to learning, resilience, and shared growth across generations. Replacing the Williamsburg Library isn't just about addressing present-day limitations, it's about building for the next generation. The last capital renovation of the Williamsburg Library was twenty-seven years ago. The current building is holding us back. A replacement building is urgently needed to provide new services and spaces for our community needs. A thoughtfully designed new building will ensure that WRL remains vibrant, accessible, and forward-thinking, and a resource for our community. So, thank you very much. I'm gonna turn over to Michael Schnexer. He's gonna review some of the presentation that they gave the Library Evaluation Committee, and then I'll come back up and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Good evening. As Sandy said, I'm gonna give you guys sort of the Horrigan and Time Off Moss efforts to date in as quick a window as I can manage.
If you could maybe speak more towards the microphone so everybody can hear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, we made our original submission back in June of 2024 with an estimated construction cost of $26.1 million and a project duration that went from January of '25 through the summer of '27 for completion. These are all excerpted from our original submission. On the right-hand side, you see floor plans that had children on the ground floor in light blue, auditorium to the south, adult spaces on the second floor to the north. This is the preliminary site plan where we placed the building adjacent to Striker Center and put the parking lot where the current library is. Also, obviously, has demolition of the police station taken into account. This shows it in a much more easy-to-digest manner. This is an aerial view from the south. You can see the library positioned next to Striker up on the north and the parking on the south towards Scotland Street. It's aerial view from the other corner, so we're north looking south. Library on Lafayette, Striker, and then again, parking to the south with the community park in the center undisturbed. View from City Square Park toward the front door, you see the main entry element. To the left is the auditorium element, and just off the right edge is the Striker Center, so close relationship between all three. A view from Lafayette Street, seeing the sort of reading room presence, if you will, facing north to Lafayette, opposite the new fire station. Nighttime or evening, early evening view at the front door, showing what illumination might look like, you know, how this thing is in the evening time. And a preliminary interior view from the, at the front door, seeing the circulation desk and the view upstairs. A phasing plan that was including in our, concluded in our original submission that showed the need to first demolish the police station once it had been vacated, that we would build the building then on the footprint of the police station and the existing parking lot while the existing park, uh, library remained open and operational, and then after the new building was up and running, take down the existing building and put the parking lot there in its place. As Sandy said, we then had some meetings in sort of the May-June time. The meetings were in May, and then we gave you guys a report in June. Two meetings with over two hundred and fifty attendees, over eight hundred and fifty responses in the online survey. There were five stations that we, or six stations, because one was sort of a video station, but we had five informational stations, and I think the end result of all of those was little change in, change to the building, the site, or the design as a result of the public input. We talked about a lot of things, I think we circled back kind of to the beginning. These are slides from those, from that report that we brought to you all. We reviewed the site, sort of with one preference and the other two options why they maybe were less desirable. Talked about the architectural treatment of the building and sort of how that would be. Talked about parking capacity as sort of a question. We came and presented that to you all, you all asked us what, what might it look like at 20 million, or how close can we get to 20 million, because that was what you all had appropriated. We had a very good meeting, I think, with MBP, the library system, Horrigan and Time Off Moss, on August of '25. We kind of went round and around, we talked about things like cut the second floor off, remove all the meeting rooms, because those meeting rooms exist in Striker perhaps, and none of those things really had substantive kind of cost reductions. The thing that, or they were difficult to reverse in the future, right? We could take the second floor off, but putting a second floor back on in the future is quite a challenge. So the one answer that seemed like it had a sizable chunk of money attached to it and would be then easy to phase in the future would be not building the meeting spaces and auditorium space. So the rudimentary diagram is missing, you see there's a dotted outline of the auditorium and meeting spaces that were to the south of the main library. And Horrigan determined that that would bring the budget down to somewhere around 22 and a half to 23 million dollars to sort of build what's left. And then you would do the other one in a future phase. Put a different way, how do you spend 20 million dollars on a library? The answer is, we don't really know, but it probably does not look a whole lot like the building that you all have asked us to look at so far.
Because I'm an architect, so they may ask architect questions.
Well, thank you both for the presentation. I appreciate the architect coming in and talking about some of those, you know, when I, when I heard the discussion about how do we, how do we save some money, I think intuitively, based on some of my professional experience, I didn't really think that we would end up with some discernible outcome that would lead us to say, you know what, that's a better decision. And I think that's clear, because cutting back would alter the building in such a way that wouldn't benefit us and certainly wouldn't achieve our needs. I did, one of, one of the things that I asked the last time you were here is about the operating agreement. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So you did, you asked about the, the regional library agreement, and just to reiterate, the regional library agreement is an agreement between James City County and the City of Williamsburg. York County is a supplemental funder, but the regional library exists because of the City of Williamsburg and James City County. So it is my understanding that those, those conversations continue to happen. Now with the schools resolved, that's what I kept hearing, is they were like, we're gonna get the schools resolved and then we'll move on to the library, which is really a much less complicated contract. And so now with the schools resolved, there have been conversations between the jurisdictional leaders, between Mr. Trivet and Mr. Stevens and Mr. Bellamy in York County, and they're making progress.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I, because I, in my discussions, and obviously nothing's a contract until it's a contract, but I feel confident certainly that James City County and the City of Williamsburg will be able to continue forward. Even with them adding 25,000 square feet of library space absent this building in the city, they would be woefully under, under, under supporting the needs of their residents. And so that relationship is important to them. So I see that not as an impediment to achieving that. How York County fits in that agreement, and I hope they do, because there's certainly a tremendous amount of growth in the upper York County, and there's residents come to the city, to the, to the WJCC library systems. Okay, so in terms of the building, you know, we hear a lot, not a lot, we hear from some, that renovating this building would be more affordable. And I agree that it may be less money today to renovate that building, but what we're going to have is, we're gonna put money into a building with renovations that may only last us 15 years. And at some point, and keep in mind, based on your presentation, this building has been built in three phases. It's not like renovating a box, you know, where you can go and gut the insides and rebuild it. It is wrought with challenges that make, in my mind, renovating it in a way that provides the type of library space that we need for the next 50 years is not gonna happen.
Right.
And so if we, my opinion is, if we spend that money to renovate, we'll be faced, this community will be faced with having to make a decision on how do we build, we need to build a new library, and that library's gonna be 100 million dollars. Because I don't think the usage of the library building is going to change too drastically. I mean, it, how it's used may change, but I think the, the usage will remain. And so I think, and Mr. Garris did an excellent job talking about this, but this is paying it forward, because there are, there'll be people 40 years from now who will be able to take advantage of a new library that will benefit from this decision. And I think we have a great opportunity, you know, given the police station coming down, I think we have an excellent proposal from Horrigan to get this happening. Yes, it's gonna cost money, but everything costs money. You know, I've professionally have invested lots of money into buildings, but, you know, my personal business at the flats. I didn't make it a 50, I didn't extend that life of that building 50 years through the investment that we've done, and at some point, there's gonna have to be a decision made. So today, where I think this community's at a point where it's time to make a decision on what to do with that, that, with this library discussion. And for me, it's to move forward and build a new library. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for addressing our questions from, from previous meetings. And I, I mean, I think I've, and thank you to all the public that continues to reach out and email or, or come here to speak at the meetings and, and share your concerns or support about this. One of the things that we continue to hear is obviously the cost. And I know in previous meetings, we talked about the trends right now in construction and how confident Horrigan is that we're gonna be close to that number of, the proposal of 26.1 million. Can you talk a little bit about just what you're seeing in the, in the construction field, what the trends are?
I'm gonna introduce John Sanderlin, who's the Director of Preconstruction. No? Senior, whatever he said. He's the guy that knows the answer.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time. John Sanderlin here, I work in preconstruction for Horrigan. We're, we're certainly seeing increases e- each quarter even. It's certainly a challenge, but nothing that we haven't encountered before, and especially with the Time Off Moss team on several projects, several which are ongoing. And we work to identify this risk upfront. We carry the appropriate contingencies upfront, which we have included in this budget. We'll work as a group through value management on a number of different exercises, pushing and pulling the design and, you know, moving balls, finding, you know, different design considerations in terms of finishes and material selections and means and methods, things of that nature, but do an increase, and it's, it is typically that three to five percent per year in, in true material cost in, in increases, and we'll certainly work as a team to mitigate those.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just, I asked that, I mean, obviously curiosity from us having this, a significant decision to make, but I think there's been several comments from people in the community about, you know, now is the time, obviously, it's not, it's not gonna be any less expensive two years from now or three years from now. So just wanted to, to get a sense of how close we could, we could get to that number still for the, for the 26.1 million. So that's the only question I have now. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I, I don't think I have a question. I actually just wanna thank everybody for all your comments, all of the different various perspectives today, because it's very, very powerful to hear everyone in this way, and I also want to thank Chris Garris in particular for really giving me a way to visualize the layout of Berkeley Middle School, because I have been struggling with that for quite some time. An O with a W on the back, thank you very much. And now I can find, you know, around a parrot teacher night. But in all seriousness, I think that that does illustrate, right, times where, you know, buildings, you kind of, you do what you have to do, and, and you put that W on the back of the O, and, you know, then you realize, oh, the cafeteria, you know, doesn't give us room to grow, and, and it does really, you know, over time, you know, you make the best decisions you can, you know, with what you have in order to, to make a building like keep moving forward, and, and we see that that's what the community has done here over the last several decades. And I think that here we are at a point where, you know, can we, I don't know if we want to put a J on the back of the W, which is on the back of the O. And, and so I think that it really is a really exciting time. I know that it can, it can be controversial, and, you know, people have different feelings, but I hope that we all actually take a minute to realize, like, there's a lot of details, it's very expensive, there's a lot, you know, of, of down in the weeds of how to do the, you know, move the needles on things, but let's all take a minute to be like, this is extremely exciting opportunity for the community to, to make something that lasts. And on a, on a, on a really, like, you know, the note of what we've learned today, I just want to point out that I really appreciate the work to, to, to answer that question about how do you reduce, you know, back down to 20 million, because something that I hadn't thought of, that your comments and the work that you all did really elevate, is that, you know, you can make a change, but again, what would that mean in the future, right? How do you, how do you, you know, work with that change now that may seem like a good idea, but then in 15 years, you're like, oof, you know, like we kind of boxed ourselves in? So I just want to say that that's something that your thoughts and, and outline that you have here, like, I really value that, and that really helped me understand a little bit more about the levers and pulleys that you're working with when it comes to design and construction and cost. So just again, I, and we've talked about it so many times, and I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to, to point those things out. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Francie.
Thank you, and I don't have any particular questions either, and I'm just gonna make my comments short and sort of ditto along the, the way here. Having been a member of the Library Evaluation Committee, I feel like we have been through a lot of these questions and answers before. I appreciate you coming back in, the whole team, to, to again, let the public know all of the details that have, have come into this. And at each meeting, I've learned more about how the library operates, what it means to individuals of all generations. In fact, I'm going to the library on Saturday night for the Dewey Decimal, and we talk about taking out the auditorium, and I think that's one of the most integral parts of the library, particularly since the, there would only be one auditorium for the three library systems, and it would be with the downtown city library, and it is used by everyone. And I believe that the need is now. I believe we have an excellent proposal, and like the mayor said, I believe we need to build a new library to the proposal that we've received. Now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Yes, well, thank you and the team for coming today and sharing the presentation. And I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone who came out and spoke as well and expressed your interest and concerns today. You know, I think it's, you know, we have a very important decision in front of us, and especially when looking at all the improvements the new library contributes to our community here in Williamsburg, so thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us now to City Council Communications. I would just remind the community that the holiday parking for downtown will be implemented probably around Thanksgiving, and our, Mr. Phoney will be sending out a notice at some point in the near future about that. Anybody else have anything to add?
Just a reminder that tomorrow is Veterans Day, and so holiday for city office. Just a reminder that tomorrow is Veterans Day, and so holiday for city offices will be closed.
All right. Leads us now to open for, Ms. Williams, did you have anything? Leads us now to open forum. I do have one speaker's card, Mr. Bob Wilson. Robert Wilson, excuse me.
Robert Wilson, 22, the Palisades. So, you've put me in a tough position, right? So, I think with respect to the library, dreams collide with sometimes the fiscal reality of what the community faces. And I, of all the speakers out here, I think everybody carefully tiptoed around the fiscal implications of building a 50,000-square-foot library facility. The city has not publicly disclosed the total cost of the project, the cost of financing the project, the impact on our taxes, nor presented the pros and cons or, or really evaluated the alternatives. So, let me try to deal with some of the fiscal reality and the true costs. The city has budgeted $40 million for the library, of which 20 million was to come from the city, because the other jurisdictions were supposed to cut, contribute to the balance. They have now pulled out of that, so the full cost of this library is going to fall on the city and city residents. The contractor's cost was a pre-design estimate of $26 million. You know, it was certainly increased during design and construction process, so typically we include 20% contingencies in the planning for these type of projects. There hasn't been a major project that the city has undertaken in recent years whose pre-designed budget hasn't grown significantly. And I talked about how the regional sports facility, pre-designed budget was 57, grew 40%. So, to embark upon a project without building in some contingency, which in this case would be about $5 million. Then there's the direct city cost of initial $4 million for IT infrastructure, cabling, routers, computer services, software, furniture, fixtures, and shelving. So, this brings the estimated cost to about $35 million. Financing just 30 million of the cost over 25 years is, Davenport has been asked to consider, would add $18 million in interest expense, bringing the total project cost to $53 million, or about $5,000 for every man, woman, and child who is not a William Mary student. And as far as city residents know, we will carry the full cost of the project without contribution from James City County or York County. What about future operating costs? The city's budgeted contribution for the library last year was 1.1 million. We know York County has given notice that they're pulling out of the regional agreement. So, with only the city and James City County carrying the operating cost, not only of this new facility, but the new James City County facility, annual pro-oper, prorate operating costs are likely to grow to about a million and a half. Together with the annual debt service on the debt of about, which would be about $2 million a year, the new annual operating cost to the city would be $3.5 million, or an annual increase of $2.4 million. Now, should James City County seek to withdraw from the regional agreement, which only requires a two-year notice currently, once their new library is constructed, the annual cost to the city with this new facility would increase to an unsustainable $7.4 million per year. At the very least, we can expect them to use their substantial leverage to change the funding formula and shift costs to the city, as was done with the new joint schools agreement. And who are we really building this for, right? The Williamsburg Regional Library Board has stated, we need this new facility based on the state's guidelines of one square foot for each resident of James, of Williamsburg and James City County. But we're only a community of 10,000, right, without the, the William Mary students. And without James City County and York County contributing to the cost, why are we building and paying for a facility sized to service their residents? The earlier speaker talked about the $49 million budgeted for the James City County facility. That 49 was budgeted for a 50,000-square-foot facility. They have since reduced their size of their facility to 25,000 in an attempt to reduce their cost. Where do we go from here? You don't need to pay another million dollars in the current agreement with Horrigan to understand the cost and the financial implications of the current agreement. It should be canceled now so we can move forward with better alternatives. As a career construction executive, I would recommend that you engage your own architect, engineer, give them your budget, and let them design a new, smaller facility that meets the needs of the Williamsburg community. If I had the time, or equal time, with the time presented by there, I would address some of the fallacies of the renovation aspect of it. I don't, I read the temperature of the room, and probably that's not a reasonable expectation, so I won't go down that road. But certainly a smaller facility sized to meet the budget and the fiscal ability of the community is something that you need to seriously consider. So, thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Yes, sir. Welcome. Just state your name and address for the record.
I live at 708 Powell Street. I'm supportive of the library. I'm supportive of the fact that it is going to be an additional expense to the city and to its residents. But I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it for all the reasons that you've heard today. I think that there are certainly things that can be done to mitigate the cost. And with a design-build project, you do set a price. You talk to Horrigan. You tell them, this is our limit, folks. Don't go above this. And you do some design-build value engineering so that it's possible to stay within that budget. But ultimately, I think it's worth it. It's part of the community. It's what makes Williamsburg a great place to live. So, I encourage you to go beyond the costs and consider the value to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the open forum, and I don't believe we have any closed session, do we? Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Ms. Williams? Aye. Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dent?
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer?
Aye.
You're adjourned. Thank you.